I haven't missed much, I just went ahead and did the next problem. But you just take five times a hundred. Um, I know it's probably one of the more complicated, complicated things you've done in this class, but. It seemed pretty intuitive to me, so I would just wouldn't have put it down. But if, if you have any questions, feel free to just talk to me after I can, if I can clarify. Okay. So, let's get back to it, onto, no, not there. Okay. We have another sum to worry about. So we have the sum. From i equals two to five. Of three i plus two, three i minus two. Okay. So, when i is, when i is two, what do I get? Oh, yeah, well. It's the same thing, yeah, you should, you should assume, yeah, if, if it doesn't say i equals, assume that that means i equals down there. So, i equals two, I put in there, what do you get? You get six minus two, which is four. But put three in there, right, because you have to go to three next. We get nine minus two, which is seven. And then you put in four next, so you do three times four, minus two, is twelve minus two. Ten, and then finally, we have to do five, and then we stop at five, because that's the one on top. So we do three times five minus two, which is fifteen. Okay, so this is i, two, three, four, and five. How do I get the final answer? I'm all up. So, four plus seven plus ten, plus thirteen, which is thirty-four. Alright. Well, I, I think, I think the hard part is just, is, understand what it means. Would you guys like, would you guys like an example of a problem that might be look something more familiar, like maybe with something you might have?
Sometimes they're not at all like this on the test. It's like twenty times harder, and you're like, oh. So it's just the same, but that.
Right, but. You could do that, you could, you could do that if you want to. So, so with the sum, if I have a sum, I can take this and split it up, right, because sums, if I'm. Doing the sum of sums, sums, I can kind of like. Hold on, I'll just tell you what I'm trying to say. Like, so I can take that sum and split it up to each part. Also, I can take any numbers and just kind of pull them to the front as well, because they're almost flying by now, thank you. So I'm gonna get three times the sum from i equals one to twenty, of i, minus two times the sum from i equals one. Twenty, you could leave the two in there as well, but. I did this to make things look a bit familiar. Okay. So notice, both of these sums are starting from one. Do I have a formula for this one? So I have some, i equals one to something of i. Yes, in this case is twenty, so it's twenty times twenty plus one over two. Minus two. Just times twenty, right, it's the same thing as the last problem, twenty times one in that case. Okay. So then. I'm gonna have three times ten times twenty-one, minus forty. Which would be. Well, actually, um, I mean, there's a lot of ways to work this out, I'm gonna go ahead just to get the number. Well, there's a ten in both of these, so I'll pull that outside. Twenty divided by two. Yeah, so you can take, you can take, remember, if I have a number on the, in the denominator, and there's two things on top, I can divide it from one of them. So I did ten in that case, or I did twenty. Twenty-one times three is sixty-three, sixty-three minus four is fifty-seven. So we get ten times fifty-seven. He's gonna give you these, but I'll write them down. Um, it's like, I guess, oh, if you, if you need them, he'll give them to you.
But the ice cream, so don't give that one to us, and I keep all of those, but we have to know the i.
So, does this make sense? If you don't start at one. Be suspicious, you probably don't do anything too complicated. Sometimes if you do start at one, it shouldn't be too hard, like the last one, it was just five times a hundred, right? But if you have one, you know, if you start at one, and you have some big number, try to see if you can pull in one of these ideas to help you solve it. Okay, because that'll make it, that'll make it a little easier, right, because we, we just, instead of doing each piece here, we just turn that into twenty times twenty plus one over two. Make our work a lesson. Any questions here? He would have done this, yeah. Just remember, just remember your rules, and then you just kind of plug in things from there. And then it's just a bit written to get that point. Yeah, if you, if you have these, he'll give them to you, so don't, you don't, don't feel like you have to memorize them. Actually, the other day, I made a, I made a formula, how to get all the, all of them, like if you know the ones before it. Anyway. Okay. Now. We talked about this one. Okay, so we want to express this as a definite integral, and then if I. Okay. So, I thought, I did, I talked about this, I did during recitation, right, you wanna, you wanna pull in, like, what, what do we know about our sums, right, what do we have in our sums? There's gonna be a delta x piece, right? What is it? Right, well, we'll get a from it, right? We have an xi, right?
Yeah.
And then we have a function that we want to work with. Okay, these are all in here somewhere, and we want to pull them out, okay? The easiest one is this delta x, okay? If you haven't had to guess, what would delta x be in this case? Three over n, exactly. Great. So delta x is three over n, so we don't know a yet. Oh, what, what does that tell you about xi? It would be a plus one. Exactly, it'd be a plus i delta x, which in this case, delta x, alright, that, right up here. Which in this case, delta x through, so we get a plus three over n. Okay? Where's this, here?
It's, it's the five plus.
Okay, well, I was saying, yeah, be, be careful. Because we want three i over n, I don't want three over n squared. So if I only want three over n, I have to go inside that square. Okay, so what does that tell you about a in that, in that case? A has to be zero. Okay, because it's not five plus three ever n, it's five plus three ever n squared. Okay, I, I talked about this a little bit in the, uh, center recitation, the ten thirty recitation, but. Why does it have to be zero? Is there any other number in there adding with that, in, inside with that, three ever n term? No, so it would have to be zero in that case, okay, there's, I can't bring anything else inside of that. Even if you, if you like, try to square it out and see what would happen, it would. It wouldn't make, it wouldn't make sense. Yeah, imagine there's like a zero plus three ever n inside. Yeah.
So it, it'd be like five plus zero, five plus xi squared, is that what that says?
Exactly, yes. Now, I'll go ahead and mention here real quick, if the square wasn't here. A could be five, right, because then you'd have five plus three ever n, so that will easily allow you to say a is five. Now, you could actually, if you wanted to. You could, you could keep a general format and just always make, oh, let's just say a is zero stuff, right? Then you could still call this xi, but then you just have five plus xi instead of five, instead of xi, and it's. Okay, but in this case, we're dealing with a square, so we have to pick zero. Okay? So can I figure out b? Right, delta x is b minus a over n. Which we said is three over n. But a is zero. So what does that tell us about b? It has to be three, yes, because we need three minus zero to be three. Okay, so a is zero and b is three. Okay, so, let's, let's name everything up here, right, so I'm gonna rewrite this limit. So, so far, we call three over n, that's xi. Okay, so we have five plus xi. Square. And then we have three over n, which is our delta x. What does that tell us about that in this case? What is, what does my function have to be? Has to be five plus x squared, yes, it's whatever this thing, it's whatever this thing comes in delta x is, except everywhere where there's an xi, it needs to be an x instead. Okay, so that's my function. Okay, so if a is zero, b is three, and f is five plus x squared. What is this as a definite integral? So from zero to three, uh. Five plus x squared d. Okay, great. Now we have to evaluate this, right, and so. We can use this to give us the answer for this guy, to see what this would be as a sum, okay? Because this one is a bit complicated to do without, if you don't, if you don't transform it, you could do it, I wouldn't advise it, but you could, so. How do I evaluate this? What's the antiderivative of five plus x squared? Now what do we do with that zero and three? What do I do with that zero and three? So we have five times three, plus one third, times three cubed. Minus five times zero. Plus one third. The whole term there is gonna be what? Zero, so all we have to worry about is this part. So we have five times three, which is fifteen, what's three cubed times one third? Uh, well, not three times three. Three cubed, right, yeah, so it ends up being nine, because three cubed is twenty-seven, divided by three is nine, or you can just think about, I have three threes. And one three goes away, so I have two threes, which gives us twenty-four. Okay, so this crazy expression here.
So for, um, the ones with the square root. That whole. Wait, hang on.
We did, we did one.
Yeah, okay, so. When it comes to the square root, do you replace the whole inside as, did we replace that as x, is that what? Yeah, 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 we put like. Everything, we just had that as x, so six plus two i over n just turned into x, so what? I'm just wondering why, like, why didn't we take everything and just put x?
Okay, no, that's, that's completely fine, I, yeah, so. Let's talk through that.
I asked the square root.
That's a ten?
It's not on here?
She just asked a general question, I'm wanting to, I'm wanting to, I'm wanting to, uh, help unders, help us understand what's going on, okay?
There's kind, there's kind of one like it, and eleven.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Number eleven, it wanted to be number eleven.
I think it's a little different though. Yeah.
Let's, we're, we're, we'll talk about this, okay, because there's a key point that I wanna, I wanna put it on here, so. In this case, you, you'd go through and get your delta x and this sort of thing, which is two over n, okay, now. When it comes to xi. I would need a plus i times delta x. Okay, which would be a plus two i over n. What's a? It could be one, it doesn't have to be one. Because, because, so this is, this is by itself, right? So I could easily, right, I have two, I have two routes I could take. I can either say xi is just two i over n, or I can say xi is one plus two i over n. Right? What will that do to my problem, well, in one case, I get. Right, a would be zero. Right, so in this case, a is zero and b is two. In this case, a is one and b is three, and that's because a is the value that's here, and then it's, there are difference of two. Right, so b minus a would be two, so we need.
So, what is, so if it's, if x of i is a plus i delta x, then, then the.
There you go, so.
The two y and, and the, under the square root, it was throwing me off.
Okay, gotcha.
So, so both of those routes work, or only work?
Yes, both of them work.
Okay.
You could do either, okay, in this case, what would, what would my function be in this case? If I let a be zero? Well, it'd be one plus x, right, because I didn't include the one there, I didn't include the one in the xi, so therefore be one plus x. What would f of x be in this case? Would be the square root of x. Okay, there's nothing wrong with either way. They both gave you the same answer. Okay, this one, this one would end you with the definite integral from zero to two. Of the square root of one plus x dx, and this one would give you the definite integral from one to three, and the square root of x, dx.
So how do you get one plus square root of one plus x?
So, what do we say xi was in this case? It's just two over n, right? So that, so that we would rewrite this as, I'm ignoring all the limit stuff on the front, we get square root of one plus xi. Delta x. Right, because this was xi. Yeah, so f of x is the square root of one plus x. Meanwhile, if I, if I let xi be one plus two i over n.
Oh, okay.
Then I have the square root of xi delta x. Okay, however, okay, now here's, here's the key, here's, here's where we get a bit of a difference. How many options do I have? You only have one now, right, because it's being squared, I can't be flimsy around with that one inside. That has to be zero. Robert. X plus y squared is not the same thing as x squared plus y squared. Unless we're talking about reeks, but we're not talking about reeks, because you guys are only a couple, so. No, we can't absorb the one back here. A has to be zero in this case, because, because there's something else happening to that i over, number times i over n term. Yeah, so you would have to use just that zero, right now, now, what if, what if, uh. What if I had two plus? One plus two i over n squared? That could be an option. You could also just pick two i over n again, right, you could just pick two i over n, or you can pick one plus two i over n.
So how do you know a, like explicitly, like, put in that, means that it's like, you only have one option, because it has to be zero, like?
Yeah, but if there is a number, then you have a couple options, right, but the, the ultimate, the ultimate thing to think about is that. That two, the number i over n term. Right? If it has something attached to it, I can't take a number and just put it with it, call that xi. Unless it's specifically with it, right, in this case, you have one plus two i over n, but earlier, we had. One plus, in parentheses, two i over n squared. We're dealing with different things.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of the, the thought process there, so that's a little, they're a little bit, you have options. Right, in, in our, in this example, or in the problem that he gave us, it was purely one option. But if there's a number adding with it, inside whatever's going on, then you can be a bit flexible, okay? Right. Okay, I need to evaluate this, yeah, what's my first step? Yeah, so yes, we need to pull this out, okay, this is always gonna be, even if you get the higher math, this is gonna be a lot, the easiest way is just to pull this out, no bother trying to. Leave it like this, right, so if I floored that, what do I get? Right, plus four x minus x, plus three x. Minus four. DX. Okay, can I take the antiderivative of each of these terms?
Yes.
Great, what are they? Right, so, in each case, right, the numbers out in front can just do whatever they want to. But in this case, you always add one to the power and divide it by the same number, so we did x to the third power divided by three. x to the second power divided by two, and so that's where this three comes from, and then. You, anytime you just have a number by itself, and you're integrating, you just put an x on it. Kind of flop an x on there. Okay, plus c, good job. Don't forget about the plus c. What? I was, no, I, I, I was, I was gonna ask that, I. I was testing you guys, don't forget about the plus c, I did, I was actually practicing problems on there earlier, and I did forget a plus c, and I felt bad about it. Don't worry, I won't, we, we won't forget the plus c now, okay? If this doesn't have bounds on it, there better be a plus c here. All, all we're saying, okay? Hey. Makes sense, we got that one, not too bad, okay? I know, this next one's a little bit interesting. Um, so we have the integral from negative two to two. Of x to the fifth minus x over x squared plus one, dx. Okay, there's actually a very quick way to solve this problem off the bat, but let's do it, let's assume that you forgot that rule at the back first, okay? Is there anything, this looks bad, is there anything that I could do to the top? Take on x, that's good. Yeah, so negative two to two of x, times x to the fourth minus one, over x squared plus one, dx, okay? Is there anything else I could do? Not quite, oh, yes, I can't cancel out these sums like that. Why? We have a difference in squares, right, you have x to the fourth minus one squared, in a sense, okay? So I can rewrite, this is the integral from negative two to two, of x, times x squared minus one, times x squared plus one. Divided by x squared plus one. Okay, now, let's check to make sure, right? These look like they can cancel, right, x squared plus ones, they look nice, they can cancel, they can cancel out, um. Is there, is there anything, let's just make sure, is there any number in here that's gonna make this zero? No, because it's, it's x squared plus one, it's always gonna be greater than zero, so. We can nicely cancel that out. So that leaves me with the integral from negative two to two, and I'll go and multiply the x back, we'll get x cubed minus x. DX. Alright. So, can I take the antiderivative of this? Yes, we can, okay. So I'm gonna get negative two to two, or sorry, we will take that off, what's the antiderivative of x cubed? One fourth x to the fourth. Antiderivative of x. One half x squared, awesome, and then I evaluate this from minus two to two. Okay, so then we just plug in our numbers, right, so we get one fourth. Two to the fourth, minus one half times two squared. Okay. Slightly. Minus one fourth, negative two to the fourth, minus one half. On negative two, squared. Okay. When I work that out, what do I get? It gives a zero. Right, because negative two to the fourth is the same thing as two to the fourth, so one fourth times two to the fourth minus one fourth times two to the fourth is zero, same thing with that. Okay, so this gives us zero. That's quite peculiar, that's quite peculiar, sorry, I can't speak. This usually happens in certain situations, only in certain situations, right, notice, let's go back to the bounds we had, it was from negative two to two. Uh, not quite. So if I plug, if I plug negative x, and so, so. There's hints that this could be some sort of special, a special type of function, right, remember, we have two types, it's either even or it's odd. Or it's neither, I, but even or odd have special properties, right? So let's try to put negative x in and see what happens. So if I put negative x in, we get minus x to the fifth power, minus negative x. Over x squared, negative x squared. Plus one. Which is one, what do we get, what's negative x, what's negative x to the fifth power? You can just pull the minus, right, same thing, that becomes a plus. Over x squared, plus one. So what is this? It's odd, because it's minus. F of x, right, f of x is x to the fifth minus. f of x, right, f of x is x to the fifth minus x. This function we have is minus x to the fifth plus x, so it's just minus f of x. So this is an odd function. If I have an odd function and I go from negative a to a, in this case, negative two to two, what's the integral? It's zero. So I'll write that property down right, real quick, so if I have the integral from negative a to a of f of x dx, where f is odd. Then the integral from negative a to a of f of x dx is equal to zero. Okay? This will be handy again. Probably for another problem, did, did he ever get back to you?
Yeah, oh yeah, the one, he said that it doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 so that, okay, so you won't see this again, but.
Well, no, no, it wasn't this one.
No, I meant like, I meant the the last one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because because it doesn't work, right, these, we're talking about problem twelve. So problem twelve had a square root of of x on the bottom. And it was from negative two to two, right, you can't put in negative numbers into a square root. And you also can't put zero into the square root, right, you have problem, right, there's, there's an issue going on there, so we can't evaluate it. As is, the function strictly has a domain that's greater than zero, so your integral can't have anything to do with anything less than that. If you look at number twelve, the bounds, you can't put into the function itself, so it it's, it's a nonsense problem. Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be able to skip that step one, but now we have a bunch more integrals to go through.
Who is excited? Yeah, yeah, let's go. We're, we're we're playing to have a integration competition at the Mac, I think, by the end of the semester, so that'll be exciting. Okay. What do we have?
Will you be competing?
What?
Will you be?
Yeah, we compete.
Ah, there's no.
There's no chance, there's no.
Yeah, there's no chance.
I understand, I, you know, I'm gonna try my best anyway, so. Okay, so we have the integral from one to two of x times five minus x cubed dx. What do you think I should do with that x? No, that's a terrible idea, what else should we do? I'm just kidding. It's, it's a, to get back for you guys, I wouldn't. Okay, so, I guess I wanna do this faster, but it'll make this a little easier. So, I have the integral from one to two of five x minus one over x squared dx. Okay, can I find the antiderivative of these things?
Yes.
Okay, what's the antiderivative of five x? Right? So we wanna, we can rewrite, this is minus x to the minus two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have one to the top and divided by minus one as well, so it's gonna be minus so minus one times x to the minus one over minus one. Right, that minus one is just from here, that was already on it. Okay, imagine minus one times one over x, x squared, so these negatives don't matter anymore. So this is, now we're evaluating this from one to, but this is the same thing as five over two x squared plus one over x. Okay. So now we plug in. So we get five over two times two squared plus one over two minus five over two times one squared plus one over one. Okay, so here, five over two times two squared is is ten.
Yep.
Plus one half, this is minus five halves minus one. Okay, I'll always advise, if you can, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, if you can put it all together and evaluate it, try to do that, because sometimes, like, notice, we can do one half minus five halves. That's a nice number, because it's gonna be negative four halves, which is just minus two. Right, meanwhile, if if we would have done this and then done this part, you would have had to do the two fractions here and then worry about it, but yeah, it may, yeah, see, gross, it'd be bad, so you made your life easier, so what's the final answer? Seven. Nice. Makes sense, good? Okay. Who's ready for you substitution? Just walk up to him, be like, can I get a different color? He gave me the wrong test, nothing on your face, and no, that's right. Okay. Back to, back to the, back to the math, okay, so. How am I gonna approach this? The whole denominator? Just the inside, okay? That'll probably be better, right, because ju- just, let's, let's suppose that you decided to name the whole denominator u. Then do you, you have to do the derivative of the outside, one half times one minus sine x to the minus one half, and then multiply by minus cosine, and I don't think you have this, so let's not, let's avoid doing that. Yeah, well, it, you, yeah, anyway. So what's the, uh? Negative cosine x.
Yeah.
DX. Okay, whereas the derivative, the derivative of sine is cosine, right? The antiderivative of sine is negative cosine. Yeah. Keep track of those signs, alright, so.
So what is?
I've seen a couple of ways that people like to do this, the the personal way that I I usually do it is I just say, okay, I wanna get cosine x dx in here, right? So why don't I just take this and divide a negative one from both sides? So I get negative du is cosine x dx. Okay, you can feel free, there's also, you can just say, okay, well, if I need cosine x, negative cosine x, then I can put a negative one in here. And then make sure you just multiply by negative one to and kind of cancel it essentially, but either way, it worked. I just like to be able to plug in, as is, instead of having to worry about putting things in here. Okay, so this is minus du. And this is u, uh, do I have to change the bounds? Yes, um, if, to make it as simple as possible, we can go ahead and change the bounds. I did, I think I talked about earlier, you don't necessarily, if you want to, you can find the just pretend like there aren't bounds, find the antiderivative and then plug in later, but if you have the chance, you might as well just go ahead and change the bounds, right? So what's, so what are my new bounds gonna be? How do I find those? Into, not cosine x, into so sine of zero is zero, so u would be one minus zero, which is one. And then what's sine of pi over two? One, and what's one minus one? So we get zero. And then we have net minus du over the square root of u. Okay, now, someone in the, one of the recitations asked me why when flipping the bounds could become practical, I think this is a good example. Right, because no, yeah, notice there's a negative, right? So I can both get rid of that negative and make the bounds mobile by just rewriting this as zero to one of du over the square root of u. Okay, you don't have to, if you wanna do like this, it's fine, there's just gonna be extra signs to worry about. Okay. Can I, I with this? Can I do the integral of that? Don't, don't plug back in u. Okay, so if you, once you've changed the bounds and changed everything to u, don't plug your u back in. Until, if if you choose to do it, do it after you evaluate it, not during it, what is it? Well, let's just, what, what, it's well, it's u to the one half, right?
Yeah.
And then we can rewrite this as u to the minus one half du, right, just bring that up.
Yeah.
Okay, right, because if I have something to a power on the bottom, I can bring it to the top with a minus. U to the minus one half is one. Yes, so it's gonna be two u to the one half, which is because you, so we do minus one half plus one, which is one, right, we do, so I'll write that. Minus one half plus one over minus one half plus one. So you get one half. And this is one half as well.
Yeah.
So this is, I'm gonna write the bounds here, um, so this is the same thing as u to the one half over one half. But then, since I have a one half in the denominator, I can multiply by the reciprocal, so this will be two u to the one half, or the square root of u, whichever you prefer. And then we evaluate this from one to zero. Is this? Okay, yeah, it's just, it's a little bit of, it's just flipping of fractions and stuff and adding things, right? But just make sure, remember your general rules, and then everything will just be to make sure, remember how to add, you know, get your fractions together. What is it, what rule is this? So this is the general power rule, which says that if I have the integral of x to the n dx, and this is the same thing as x to the n plus one over n plus one. Notice, in this case, I have no bounds. Let's see. Okay, that's for any, that's for any n, I, maybe it should be better to put r, because n usually means like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. But that's for anything, right, so one half minus one half minus square root of two, that's fine. That one will be very fun to do, but it's possible. Okay. So now we just need to evaluate this, right? I could separate this out, but I don't think this is very hard, what's two, what's, if I put one in here, what's two times one to the one half? It's two, if I put zero in here, what's two times zero to the one half? So it's just two. Okay, the harp, yes. Here?
In the, in the balance.
Oh, uh, so we said, I'll write it here real quick, so since we were changing everything from x to u, we wanted to change, we changed our bounds by putting our x values inside u, so I saw, well, what's u of zero? So u of zero is gonna be one minus the sine of zero, which is just one, and then I said, well, what's u of pi over two? Well, u of pi over two is one minus the sine of pi over two, which is one minus one, which is zero. Okay, so the pi over two essentially became this, this zero right here, or this zero, I guess, as you're calling it. Awesome. Notice too, uh, I, this might be, that's my, actually, sorry to point out, um, we talked about the like over, where it was over the square root, you couldn't do negative two to two, and that was purely because of all the negative numbers before them. Notice, if I try to put pi over two in here now, that wouldn't technically work out, would it? Okay, right, because it's one minus the sine of pi over two, sine of pi over two is one, so you would technically get zero on the bottom, okay? But when we look at this as a function, you can kind of think about that as even if it goes towards, which that would go towards maybe some sort of infinity, right? We're still talking about all the area underneath here. Uh, that goes under the side, so you don't have to worry about, oh, I don't have this value, exactly, that's okay, we should still be able to work it out to to get it. Because the the sums are just nice that way, right, or that, how we defined it, you don't have to worry about any points like this necessarily, until you get to like a later course, but oh, do you have a question? Okay. Great. Oh, I have a couple of chew, that's not what I wanted to do, let's see, I have a couple of chats here, what is du, oh, there we answered, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. Great, so what's next on the page, number eleven? Okay, so we have the integral zero to a of x times the square root of x squared plus a squared dx. A is, a is greater than zero. Doesn't really matter, I think, but it's I mean, it's a it's there, yeah. Just because it even feels negative, it shouldn't change the problem, it wouldn't make this any, it wouldn't give us any problems here, so, okay. So don't be, don't be afraid that a is we don't know what a is, doesn't matter, that's the, we're just, we did that to say, oh, I just, if I have this general family of integrals, and I can evaluate it, just call a, hey, you know, and then, so if I want a to be one, I can see what that is, a two, see what that is, et cetera. Okay. How do I do this? Why is that? Right, so I guess my main question though is, why, why would that, it help for us to call that thing the inside u? Exactly, so what's, so what's the derivative of u, so if we said u would be x squared plus x squared, what's du? Here's the key. Okay, it's the fact that when I took the derivative of that thing, it gave me that guy on the outside, right? It gave me a way to say, oh, there's where that guy went to, let me pull him back in, right? Remember, this is a reverse chain, chain rule says, let me unload, let me kind of let out everything, and when I do the integral, I said, come, come back in, like, bring it back in, right, and that's exactly what's happened. I'm not, I, by instead of letting u be this, I realized that's the x, that's, that guy ran away, so I need to put it back in, right? So, again, um, you can either put a two here and then one half. Right, exactly, and that's what I'm gonna do, but I wanna give the option, um, for whichever makes more sense, I'm going to take both sides and divide by two. So we get du over two is x dx, okay, because there's no two with that x up here, it's just by itself. Okay, so this is du. And then the thing inside here is u, okay, so oh, we also have to put change your bounds though, right, so let's do that. What are my new bounds gonna be in this case? Yes, so, when I put zero in, I get zero squared plus a squared, which is a squared, and when I put a in, I get a squared plus a squared, which is two a squared. Okay, and so we get square root of u du, I bet you guys are gonna retire seeing squares since this point. So. One half, that's one half, that's du over two, right, so don't forget about that one. One half, that's one half, that's d u over two, right? So don't forget about that one. All right. Can I find the antiderivative of this?
Yeah.
Yes, we can. Oh, we write that as u to the one half? Okay, so this is the same thing as one half. What's antiderivative of u to the one half? So I add one to the power and divide by the same number, so I have three halves over three halves. A squared, two a squared, but I can also rewrite this as. One half to multiply by the reciprocal of that number, so I get times two thirds. U to the three a. Okay? From a squared to two a. And now. These twos, I mean, they can cancel, so why not do that, right? Just make those go away. Don't need to keep them around, me and him, if you want to, you'd get two over six, but might as well just write as one over three. Okay, and now we just need to plug in, right? So. This is gonna give me one third. Times two a squared to the three halves. Minus one third. Times a squared. To the three halves. Okay, now. Um, we can actually simplify this a little bit further. I, I don't know if you really get any points taken off at this point, cuz you've done most of the work, but. I can't do much of this too, but I have a squared, right? What is? What's a squared to the three half power?
B, A.
Say cubed. If I, if I have something that's two a power, two a power, I just multiply the powers together. So I take two times three halves, and that'll give me a cubed. So. That allows me to fix. This a squared in here, I can write that as a cubed. And this, the two is still. To the three half power, I can't really fix that. Minus one third. Times a cubed. Okay. So again, this is more, this isn't as much. This section is much just kind of cleaning up from. Box is next. I can also just factor out a one third a cubed, which will leave me a one third a cubed. Times two to the three halves. This? Not quite. So two to the three half power is the same thing as two cubed. To the one half power. Right, I can just take that half and split it off. What's two cubed?
Eight.
Is eight. And what's eight to the one half power? Here's the problem, right?
Yeah.
You can't take the square root of u. At best, if you wanna write it as best as possible, four does go into this, so you can pull out a two. And so you can rewrite this as two root two. If you wanted. But you don't have to. I, I would just leave this to the. Okay, but here's the nice thing about this, right? If a is one, then I know that integral is just one third times two to three half minus one. If a is two, then I know that it's gonna be eight thirds times two to the three half minus one. Right, so it's, it's a really nice system to be able to say, what's a, what's the answer? And you don't have to worry about anything else in between anymore. Awesome. It's like we have a chat. Here, I'll see, how did you get two to the a, two a squared and a squared? Bond? Um. Oh, bounds, yes, um. Uh, so that came from you again, right? Anytime I'm changing my bounds, I need to plug in my original bounds into u, right? So if I want u at, I want u at zero. Which is going to be zero squared plus a squared. Which is a squared, and I want u at a, which will give you a squared plus a squared. Which is two a squared. Okay, and then those go, and they're respective spots here, cuz now I'm working in terms of u instead of. Okay. Okay, so we can skip twelve. How about that? Yeah, that twelve is a, is a bunk problem, so don't. You won't even, like, I, I even struggle to really, like, understand what might have been meant. I think there's probably just something in terms of. The idea was there, but the, the things used didn't make it work out necessarily, so. Okay. Because, because what should happen, I mean, and I have, I actually worked this out with. Someone else earlier. I think, I think the, the goal was to basically say that. Uh, let me just demonstrate a quick of what I think, I think the goal of a question like that was. So if I had, basically. Uh, the example I gave was this. Okay, so if I had a problem like this. Okay. Notice there's no problems here now, because it's, it's always positive on the bottom, so we're good. And I can take this x squared plus one and divide it from each term. Right, so. That would give me what? If I divide the next one plus one from each guy, each term here, what would I get? Okay. Now, I could split this up. I can do the integral from negative two to two of one dx, which is very easy to do. And the integral from negative two to two. Sin x over x squared plus one. D x. This one's not possible for you guys, it's, it's difficult. Okay? But. Notice the bounds. The bounds go from. Negative a to a. Okay? Is this, is this an odd function? So, when one test negative x, right, which will be sine of minus x over minus x squared plus one. Sine of minus x, what, what can we do with that minus? And then that's all over, just x squared plus one, right? And that is. Minus f of x, right? I just tagged a minus sign on the front. So this is an odd function, right? So this whole portion here just becomes zero. Does that make sense? So it's always good, if you have these bounds, it's always good to kind of check that and see if it works, okay? Because it makes quick work of this, and then this guy's easy, right? What's the integral of one? Not one. X, yeah, and then you, and it's from negative two to two, so then it'd be two minus negative two. So the answer to this integral will be four, right? So I think the key here is to say. Can I split this up, right? The, do the easy part, and then notice some trick about the hard part, which is that it's an odd function, right? And then so it worked out. Yes, so, um. No, I honestly, like, no, I, I said, that's probably a good thing to, to be able to look at that and say, that doesn't work, right? Is what number twelve would normally be. I'm just going off of, cuz you, you said that he said like the. Kind of ignore that one, but yes, the, the conditions of, of the fundamental theorem of calculus is that it needs to be. Continuous and differentiable, right? Just like how the mean value theorem and how the, you know, rules theorem were worked, right? If, if they're not, within the bounds you give, and it's, then it doesn't work, just like that one. Okay, and you can't use it. Um, in some cases, it might still have an answer, um, and that's what we're gonna see on number thirteen, thirteen here. But you have to do a little bit of work around to get to that. Right, so number thirteen, I didn't get to cover this with the nine o'clock recitation. Hello? Oh, you're good, um, um, so I didn't get to do this with the nine o'clock recitation, but I did it with the ten thirty, but I'm gonna go through it again, cuz I think it's, uh, uh, we need to go through it. Remind me of the bounds, it's. Negative, what, negative to zero, yes, of the absolute value of x plus one. D x. Okay? So we get this, right? Now, here's a prime example of one that, in the general case, is not, we can't use, right? If you try to say, well, if it'd be minus f of a first. What would you call it? What would you call big F in that case, right? Because this is an absolute value, it doesn't really have a. Anti-derivative, but second, this isn't continuous and differentiable on this, on the interval, right? It's continuous, but it's, it's not differentiable. Okay, we talked about it a lot with the mean value theorem, so. I need to take this and split it up, right? And to do that, let's take absolute value and split it up, right? So I'm gonna take. The absolute value of x plus one and split it up into its piecewise kind of description, right? Cuz it has two pieces to it. Okay? What does the first piece look like? Okay, yeah, so it's gonna be, so if, if this is negative, right? If x plus one is negative, then we need to make that positive, so we put a. Minus sign on it, right? So we do minus x plus one, which would be minus x minus one, okay? When am I gonna have this? When x, what, what x is, will this feature for? When it's less than negative. Right, because if it's less than negative one, then this is less than zero, so we need to change it to be positive. Okay, what does the other half look like? X plus one, okay, now, um, if you put this one first and that one second, that's fine, it doesn't matter, um, just make sure you have the right. What's the, what x's are included here? Greater than equal to, not zero, minus one. Right, because if it's, if it's greater than or equal to minus one, it'll be zero and positive, so, right? So we need to keep track of those, of that boundary, right? So this is the point that I need to. Separate this one, and then my, my theorem will actually work in that case. So, I'm gonna split this up into an integral from, since negative one is a splitting point, negative two to minus one. And minus one to zero. What piece is gonna go in here? Negative x minus one. Good? And the piece that goes in here? Can I do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, might take, you know, a little bit of work to kind of evaluate it, but this isn't, these aren't anything too hard. So, what's the antiderivative of minus x minus one? Minus x, right? If I have a number, I just put an x on it. Okay, and then I evaluate this from minus two to minus one. Plus, what's the antiderivative of x plus one? And then I evaluate this from negative one. To zero. Okay? So now we plug in, and we evaluate, right? So we're gonna have, so, in this case, it might be easier for me just to focus on each side. You know, maybe just because there's more than just two pieces, so we'll have. Minus one half, and minus one squared, minus, minus one. Minus. Negative one half, times minus two squared, minus, minus. Okay, so. This is just, so we have minus one squared, which is just one, so we have minus one half. Plus one. So minus two squared is positive for times minus one half. Is minus two, and then we have plus two. Well, that's just zero. So this is just zero, actually, all right, let me keep it there, so we don't. Okay, so that's just negative one half plus one. Which this part is just one half. Okay. This side, we'll do one half, times zero squared, plus zero. That's also just gonna be zero, right? So I'm gonna put that minus one half times minus one squared. Plus. Minus one. Okay, minus one squared is one, one half times one. One half. Minus one. One half minus one is what? And then it's minus, minus one half, so it's positive one half. So we take one half plus one half. Which is.
One.
One, yeah. Okay. So, yes. Here? Yeah, so, so when x is less than negative one. What is this thing on the inside? Is it positive or is it negative? It's negative, right? So if I wanna, if I'm doing the absolute value of a number, right, of a negative number, then I need to make that positive, right?
Yeah.
So I would put a negative sign on the front, right? So what I'm doing is I'm saying, I, if it's less than negative one, then to get the absolute value, I need to do minus. X plus one. Right, I need to do negative of the x plus one value. In that area. Which is minus x minus one.
Oh.
Right, cuz x plus one is negative.
Yeah.
So if I put another negative on it, that makes it positive. So that's why we get minus x minus one. Okay, that just comes from distributing that minus. Okay? Any other questions there? Okay, well, this is a little bit of a longer arithmetic here, but. Not too bad. Um, something else I wanna mention is, you can also feel free to, to, you know. Pull out your. Handy graphic tricks, right? Cuz this is, I mean, as we said, this is minus x minus one, that's aligned with. Y intercept, negative one, right, and. Slope minus one, right? And this is x plus one, y intercept one, and slope. One, right, and, and this is the absolute value, so I only want the positive. Part of this, so you could also just draw it, or know what the absolute value looks like, right? And we're wanting to go from minus two, zero. What's this and what's this? They're triangles. You can do their triangle. So you would also get, right, cuz this is base one, height one, base one, height one. Right, so this triangle will be one half times one times one, which is one half, and one half times one times one, which is one half, which would give you one when you add it, okay? So. If you're, if you're shaky on your arithmetic here, you can also, you can always appeal to just. Well, how do I normally find areas? I look at the shape and I use my formula. Which is what you can do, okay? Now, I wouldn't advise you to do it to the cosine x of the square root of one minus sine x. I'd like you to tell me what that shape looks like, but. For this one, it's, it would be too bad. Okay? Great, we got another substitution, okay? Okay, so. You, all of you should hopefully have seen my, the problem I gave by now with the secant, secant tangent. Of the square root of x. I gave that one purposely to set up. Like, a little bit easier for. Version of what this is, okay? This one is, is, is not too bad at all. So we have the integral of sine of x. Times secant squared. Of cosine x. D x, okay, and there's no bounds on it. So what is this? What do we call this? It's an indefinite integral. Right, yeah, so you need a plus c on this answer, okay? If you don't have a plus c, you're gonna lose points, so. Give me some ideas, what do we do? U is gonna be cosine x. D u. Great, yeah, and, and so what are we seeing again? We're seeing, oh, there's the sign that popped out from my cosine in here, so. I'm going to, I wanna get sine x dx, right? So I'll multiply this by minus one, so we get minus d u sine x dx. So here's. D u. And, or minus d u, and this is u and the inside. Okay, so what do I get when I rewrite that? Secant squared u. Secant squared u. Yeah, so it's a negative. So we get minus the integral of secant squared du du. What is this? It's it's tangent, just positive tangent. This is, the negative's here, but the integral of secant by itself is okay? What what else would I do here? Good job. Make sure you don't forget the plus C, okay? Am I done? Yeah? Okay. Yes, we have to, yeah, we'll plug you back in, right? Because this is, this is an indefinite integral. If I have a definite one, I can put something down, if I have an indefinite, I can't do that. Okay, there's no bounds for me to change. And I wait, so I had to put u back in, which is yep, so this is minus tangent of cosine of x. Not too bad, right? This is probably one of the, the easier use of ones to run into, okay? You like the ones that are just nicely absorbed into. Unfortunately, this next one isn't like that. So I, you might have something like this. Maybe it'd be more like, you, you guys know, though, I gave you, it was secant of square root of x, tangent of square root of x over the square root of x, right? That was, that's, maybe that might be what you get, but that's i- if you just have to recognize, oh, it's called u squared, and then everything works out. Okay? So okay, so this next one is the hardest use of you'll get. I promise you, you will not get anything harder than this problem, okay? I told the ten thirty one that if you if you can master this, you understand this, then I, every other integral should become pretty easy to you. Okay? Maybe the trick, maybe I brought you some trick ones. Other than that, it's, it should become pretty easy to you. So this is the integral. I got keys, I can log on. Oh, right. Okay. Uh, so this is x squared of square root of one minus x dx, right? Is there bounds on this? No, it's an indefinite integral. Awesome. So good, yeah, so we'll need to let u equal minus x, right? First, I I just don't like having anything complicated in sum and square roots. I mean, I just liked it to be a letter, so we'll let u be one minus x. What's du then? We're doing the derivative in this case, right? Not the integral. Right, we're doing the derivative, right? So du is, we probably find the derivative, right?
Yeah.
So it's just minus one du. Okay? So literally, and you can also mul-, you know, multiply that negative one over. So dx here just becomes minus du. Okay, so you also the example I gave in class where we had an issue, right? What is, what's the problem here again? What what's going on? There's still x's left over, right? So how can I fix that?
Yeah, I know. It's taking white outs.
You like, you like scratch out the problem you gave and write your own one. I mean, if you you, it sounds like you'd have a very interesting time reading if all this happened, I'd say so, I don't know. He can't fail us all. Okay. So, this, this seems, this seems like the right, this seems like the right direction to take. This seems like a good option, okay? So if I can't, if I can't have this x squared absorb into something, I'm just gonna rewrite it in terms of u, right? Can I find x in terms of u?
Uh, yeah.
Well, we can. X is the same thing as one minus u, right? If we let u be one minus x, then x is gonna be, I add x minus u one minus u, okay? So for any x's that I have left over, I'm just gonna replace with a one minus u. So we get the integral of x squared, which we now have as one minus u squared over the square root of u and then that's times negative u. Hey?
Would you not take the negative of?
What is it?
Would you not?
Yeah, you can take the negative of. That's good, yes. You're right, you could, I could have done that in a later step, or just did it then, but yeah. The negatives come out. Okay, what's next? Can I take the antiderivative yet? Yes. So yeah, so let's expand the top. How do I, how do I expand the top? Yeah, one minus u, double minus u. Same thing. Or you can use Pascal's triangle. All right, test, let's one plus u to the sixth power. Yeah. Uh, five, five, it's easier to remember up to five. Six, you can add to get all them, I think it's six, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, fifteen, six.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Wait, no, that's all right, it's six, fifteen, twenty-one, fifteen, six. Because five has five, ten, ten, five.
Yeah.
Okay. So I multiply this out, right, so I'm gonna get one minus u minus u minus two u plus u squared. Cool. Um, so this expands into that. Okay? Um, to make this a little bit, so I don't have to worry about this minus sign later, I'm just gonna go ahead and pull this back in with each of these terms, if that's okay? So we'll get the integral of, so we have one minus two u plus u squared, right? So I'm gonna get minus one plus two u minus u squared over the square root of u. But feel free, if you wanna leave the negative out, that's fine, it doesn't really affect you. Okay? Now, always comes the question, and now what? Now what do we do? Thanks. Yeah. Not yet. Yes, so I can take that square root of u and divide it from each, each term. Yeah, so we just break it up, right? So I'm gonna have the integral of minus one over the square root of u plus two u over the square root of u minus u squared over the square root of u. Okay, and to make this even easier, square root of u is the same thing as what?
Uh, the natural log, oh, there, my.
I was like, are you calc two already?
Yeah, I'm like, wow.
What? The the deri-, the derivative of the natural log of x is whatever x.
Yeah.
That's calc, that's something we're gonna do. Well, some, depending on the calc book, they'll do that ahead. Um, most M one nineteen, which is a brief survey calculus, calc two twenty-one and calc two thirty-one all learn that, that one sixty-five dozens. They wait until calc two to learn that. So all the other calc ones, except you guys learn that. So, but they, but they choose to do it in like this section, I'm like, studying inverses and the derivatives there. Um, just because you won't really see that, have to use that integral as much until calc two. Because otherwise, you just have really lame examples of it. Okay, so let's rewrite each of these terms, right? Because still, I I don't know how to work with that. Okay, so how can I rewrite negative one over u to the one half? Negative u to the negative one half?
Yep.
Good? So now I have two u to the one divided by u to the one half. Good? Whenever I'm dividing two things of the same base, I subtract powers. So we're gonna do one minus one half, which would be one. And finally, what's this last one gonna be? U squared divided by u to the one half.
Who?
U to the three halves. Because we have to do two minus one half, which is three halves. Okay? D u. Here, or this?
Yeah.
Why is this negative? What's on top? Just the one, right? There's no, there's nothing with a u on on top, right? So yeah, there's nothing to go with it, right? Technically, you could think about it as like u to the zero power on top, but yeah, just, just if you, you just look at the top. Okay? So now I can't do the antiderivative of each of these things, okay? So what is the antiderivative of u, um, my, just ignoring the negative for now, u to the minus one half? Yeah, so, um, what, so to u to the one half is correct. Um, I'm gonna show real quick. So remember, we take, we add one to the power and we divide by that same number. Right, so we have negative one half plus one over minus one half plus one, which is one half, and then when we multiply by the reciprocal here, that's gonna give us minus two u to the one half. Okay? How about this, this, this guy, two u to the one half? So two u to the one half. How do I, what do I do with that? Antiderivative. Yeah. So we get u to the three halves, and I'm gonna write three halves as well on the bottom. So I just add one to the power. And so this is gonna come out as two times two thirds, four thirds u to the okay? U to the three halves, antiderivative of that. Exactly, so you get u to the five halves over five halves, because again, we add one to the power. So, and then that five over two, we take the reciprocal and we get two over five u to the five halves. What else? Plus C, thank you, I'm glad nobody forgot that. See, now, see, now, this is when it gets you, because you're gonna be working through this long problems, and then you're gonna forget the plus C idea. Actually, no. Yeah, no problem. Right, yeah, I guess, I guess you could, if you get to the test question, you can just put plus C on it, but say, hey, I remember that you needed plus C for that. I don't know what it is. Okay. Is this, is this the end, though? Why not? We have to put u back in. Right, because it's an, because it's an indefinite. So we have minus two, one minus x to the one half, plus four thirds on one minus x three halves, minus two fifths, times one minus x five halves. And that is our final. Yeah, well, I I would say if you gave your bounds on this problem, it would probably be like two and one. Actually, not even, no, uh, one and, one and zero. Because if you put one in there, you get zeros. And if you put zero in, it's all ones. So you just have two plus four thirds minus two fifths. So if if it was bound, it'd be something like that. He's not gonna do like, x is a hundred and x is, x is fifteen. In that case, you can probably just plug in the numbers and just not even worry about touching it, just leave it. All right? Does this make sense? Is this, did the process make sense? Okay, really? After this part, it was, well, it was just a bit of like arithmetic work, kinda can, you know, just kind of a reminder of how do I divide things, okay? The big calculus part was, was here, okay? So practice this, but understand this, okay? Because this is the new thing, this is the new thing you need right here. Okay, the final problem. Oh, it's scary, the final problem, it's nice, it's pretty, so for this one, I'm sure it'll be, it'll be nice. So we have, if the integral from three to k of three x squared dx is thirty-seven, what is k? Okay, so clearly, what we do is you just keep guessing until you get it right. No, I'm just kidding, don't, don't do that. No, that's, that, it would take you forever. I mean, you could, and you, there's probably a pretty easy guess in this case to think of, but you can, we can evaluate this, right? What is the antiderivative of three x squared? It's x cubed. Right, because it's three times one third x cubed.
Yeah.
Let me evaluate that from three to k. Right, because we, we just use the fundamental theorem calculus on this side. So k cubed, we don't know. What's three cubed? And and what does that have to be equal to? Hey, that's a nice question. What's twenty-seven plus thirty-seven? I I wouldn't always guess four. It worked in this case, but you're gonna find Okay, any other questions here online? Thank you for something by, I'll have this, uh, up as soon as possible, so well yeah, no problem.